Yeah, that's the stuff that came out of the hatch.
That's the one that came out?
Oh gosh. That's the regular ones and stuff. Yeah, the stuff you go with.
Yes.
How are you doing?
I'm good.
I'm here. I'm not doing very good today. Oh, I got, I got other things for you.
Oh, I bet you did.
Oh, I do. Me and you have been talking lately.
Yeah. Yeah, he come on and told me he has a version.
Yeah, yeah, but this version is right.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm sure your version's gonna be a lot different than mine.
Oh, totally, totally. It, that's actually, yeah. Johnny? Do your thing.
Okay, I'd like to just go through this stuff. You guys, the workshop, if you don't mind me leaving, David can call me in the morning and make sure they're gonna approve the board. If that's right again. I have an estimate of funds to draw down. RD did approve the work I asked about last month for Herzog to do the paperwork of wiring that they've done before and for the disconnect panel. Disconnect panels in. I have a pay estimates of the drawdown request of fifty-five hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cents for it to be paid to Herzog once the money comes in. And I have our final bills for engineering fees for the remainder of the O and N manual that we supplied to Dennis already and for the last on the engineering design that has been approved with the council of cities. Total amount sixty-nine hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. If it's approval, I'll give the mayor's signature before I leave. David will probably warn us, no board took action, I'll get it sent over to Kevin. He'll be the final one. Secondly, on that, I have a budget to bid. I think David probably already gave you a copy of the bill he took on the lab equipment this evening. The, we had to break this up into three sections because we found out that some of the suppliers could not bid anything yet. IDEXX has got a monopoly on section C. It's only their equipment. I guess they've got a patent on it for certain things. None of us can make any decisions. So IDEXX with section C and Blue Book with sections A and B are the low bids and it comes to ninety-two hundred and twenty dollars and two cents.
So we're gonna have to do both of them then?
Yes. Yes, it was made up in each section to award independently to the low bidder of each one. And we had estimated in our budget ninety-four hundred and fifty-four dollars. So we're two hundred and twenty-five dollars, two hundred and thirty dollars less than that. We're in good shape. That still left you guys a contingency factor of forty-eight hundred eighty dollars after we get you reimbursed for the citizens' lights down there and stuff. So we get everything done, they'll transfer that into your interest account and you guys need to use it. Yes, sir.
Okay. What does consist, what is in this, the one whole?
The...
You say lab equipment?
We have to do a fecal test on this now because of the UV. This is all the trays and the equipment, the, to do that, the binder and everything on it. There is a thermometer, the DNR required, a DO probe with additional attachments to it that's on one of them. And if you have...
I got one of those here.
Yes, please. That's the idea. On, on the section A, it was a binder incubator which used for the fecal, a UV lamp that they need on it and a UV beauty cast. That all has to be used with the section C that I mentioned to you of the IDEXX equipment, which is quantity tray sealer, a hundred and twenty milliliter shrink bandaged vessels, there's one of those, twenty pack coli, coli alert. There's two of those for eighteen each one and two combos and then a quantity tray two hundred prepared. That does all of the fecal testing. The other one then on part B was, was portable pro, portable meter with LBO, the oxygen and monkey pro sonon. And that's everybody's own. But it gives us everything that DNR decided is on the floor plus what we need for your new permit to do the E coli fecal test.
Now, will the city be doing the testing themselves?
Yes.
That's why we...
We still have one we can't help, right?
This, this is only for the E coli fecal test. You were doing stuff.
We don't have to send that now?
It's got six hours away.
What we have to send off is what we always send off now at our company.
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, we continue to do that, but we won't have to send any coli off.
You'll be done out here.
We'll be done here in-house.
Otherwise, everything will be...
I think five is the one to know that we tilt in, we tilt in that one.
Yeah. I just want to know what all this is.
Yep. And as I said, we still have five thousand dollars left that RD will allow you to use in your interest category. They'll transfer it over to anybody who needs it to be done. So this is basically a closed-out project and we'll see where we're at.
So we're taking A from Blue Book, B from the Hatch. You're taking A from Blue Book, B from Hatch, Hatch and C from IDEXX.
No. A and B both from USA Blue Book.
Oh.
Twenty-two thirty and twenty-three hundred compared to the thirty ninety-seven and then C from IDEXX forty-six eighty-nine. And those bottom three then add up to the ninety-two hundred twenty dollars and two cents if my math is correct. And then as a last note, Kevin gave us approval, as I mentioned a second ago, about the lights and also for the award of the panel to EIC as we discussed last month. And they said that it would be made and installed within the next month. So next month meeting, I'll be able to come down, we'll have the lab, we'll put the invoices in, the panel in and done and it'll be the final drawdown from RD.
What lights are up? The lights?
Yeah, the lights is up, the citizens electric, how quickly they're going to go.
So next time it'll be citizens electric?
Yeah. Now, after we sent it in, made the request, he had us go back to Marzuko and ask if they wanted it on. They sent a gentleman down and he checked, he said, I can't compete with that. He couldn't set the poles for that price.
He could give it whatever saying he couldn't, well, we could give it to DNR to show that we tried to get it, nobody can. And so they let us go ahead with citizens electric. I believe I'm not mistaken, they can never be within like four thousand dollars for the lights or thirty-some hundred? They get that thing.
And that did not include hooking up. That was strictly getting on the poles out there, have raised our poles.
Anything else?
No.
Do you guys have a problem with any donations?
Nope.
None of you guys work off this agenda or whatever you want to do? Did anyone just say it? You want to? Come on. Going on? You all night, Kri?
Good for you, four guys.
Come on, go, go.
That's it, did this one?
We all remember, figure out what you're doing with the staffs, hi everybody.
Oh, yeah, I've got something.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak. That person today, many of you remember, taxes entry, you know, it's plenty of notes. You also included in this note that we're gonna check five hundred dollars as a donation to the city. I'm not mentioning all of them all, I'm just... It says, please use it as you see fit. I know it's not much, but it helps hide it too. Now, a lot of times when we donate, she specifically tell me to put it in cemetery or park. You tell me where I see fit. I'm asking for. Where do you, where would you think I should put it or should split? I was thinking cemetery, park or the ones that are split. I think you'll split. I mean, I think that would be the fair way to go about it then instead of... Instead of just putting it in one, that's kind of what I thought too. Cause all three of them could use help.
What three?
The one on, cause we gotta, you know, buy batteries for it every five years, cemetery and park. I think that would be the best thing. I, I, what I thought to you, but I'm gonna say, ah, so you guys got to... Like I said, normally when somebody gives me a donation, they specifically tell me where they want it. Most of the time, you know, it's like a couple bucks from cemetery, a couple bucks from the park, here and there. It's just like, where do you see fit? That could be all three. I don't know, maybe somebody's best thought about it.
I didn't think about this time, but we get those parts in the tent because they're always these money. Especially the cemetery, so it's... They get bags of donations, man.
Yeah, I don't know. Is that something that we have to hold in mind?
No.
No, you don't have to.
We get, get contented.
I just wanted your...
Contented the month before we did all that.
I can't focus now, but I mean, can't...
Probably could've done it ourselves, but the...
Yeah, I could've did it myself, but I wanted, wanted you guys to give me two. And I, that's what I thought, you know? Well, when do we have to, when do we sign it? Not for five years. Well, we still have to pay, don't we have to do insurance on it every year?
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, there's insurance on it every year and then you buy your battery.
Well, you, when you buy them batteries, you're gonna find that was needed. That's not cheap.
It came from you.
I was just asking out of curiosity, that's all. Are we budgeting, are we budgeting for it? Sign it, put the battery on, you know, and then stay in Charlotte.
Thank you.
Bye, Charlotte.
You guys got forty-five more minutes?
I would like to discuss this drug take-back program.
Okay. Yeah, I was contacted by the St. John's County Health Department about doing the drug take-back program in St. Mary's, cause they've never had one here. They've had in Bloomingdale's, they've had multiple ones in St. John's. They were wanting to use City Mall, so I put it on the agenda, you know, get you guys... They're wanting to do that on January eighteenth, which is a Saturday, from nine to twelve. I will come, you know, on my own time, you know, unlock for them, lock and back up. I'll be here in my office, I'll be heading to work, you know, off the clock. Because I believe in that program. It, you know, takes drugs, you know, potentially gets hands out of water supply. It's just a really good public safety type of program, so...
How would we provide the rest of us?
Um, this, I assume the other department's really good, but social media, they got a website, Facebook or Twitter and then typically stuff goes through the paper as well on drug take-back programs.
They're writing on there, it'll help.
Yeah.
If we both do it.
You know, certainly probably have flyers where we can hang it, the gas station and... Well, I'm thinking of the older people, I don't know, thinking on Facebook, Twitter.
Well, that's true too.
But I'm pretty sure, yeah, the paper and I'd almost have the new flyers too. Do they announce that? If anything, we can make our own... I'll make flyers to hang around.
I'm curious.
Do they announce that on the radio station?
Yeah, some department, we've said, we've said earlier...
They'll call us Thursday, we can call them one day.
Well, they, they posted a comment about the yard sale, so...
I wouldn't be surprised if they don't, if they, or if they do it, don't notify the radio station. They usually take care of it.
Let me do that.
And how often is this gonna be? Is this about once a month, every few months?
No, this is just...
Once a year?
Well, we don't, there's no real set schedule for it. It is very, you know, surprising where they'll have one in St. John's and then they'll have one two months later and the same amount comes in. So there's a lot of stuff out there. You'd think it was wiggle off after a period of time, but it really doesn't. So, yeah, since they've never been here, I'm kind of curious what the numbers will be.
Oh, me and my wife, I mean, it's probably they come up, just about three or four days ago, we've been looking through it and we got all kinds we gotta get rid of, we talked about getting rid of. But, oh, get it over in the trash, get you to this. I said, they have places where you take them. It's just coincidence that that come up within a week after we talked about it. Cause I got all kinds of stuff I don't take half of and quit taking it.
Everybody wants that, we start looking.
They will provide a county deputy for security, so we don't even have, you know, big mark to do it. And they take the stuff up to the, you know, county sheriff's department where they do have an incinerator on site, so it is safe to use.
Oh, my question is, does any of them have a problem?
No, I think it's a good idea.
I, I don't think I could give them. Something should be done more often, especially when I read that fish and things are getting contaminated with throwaway drugs.
Yeah.
The places around these big oceans, ain't they big cities? I mean, the big lakes, this gets into the big third problem.
Kills my folks in the plant building too. Yeah, I know.
I have a lot of cops that are with Cody and it's sitting in my cabinet for a year that I just don't know what to do with.
Sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
It's not that the guy didn't get rid of, really, he'd go on.
I like the freedom.
That was a good one. Just let a few people hear you, God.
Oh, we may not know a gentleman, might rent you their house and take it.
Thought I'd try to get home.
I ain't gonna beat you up the house.
I can't understand it, but I had some pain pills, I took two, if you can. I don't know why anybody didn't hire, I felt like hell, I mean, I was... No. I felt, I guess people called it a hire, but I wasn't enjoying it at all. And I had to, I worked two pain pills again. But they think people love that, but, oh, I wasn't happy at all. I mean, I didn't like it. I thought I had OD'd just cause of it.
We have something in the packet about the St. John's County community, the grant program. Have the agents look it over, are any interested in it at this point? Well, I have kind of deadline and cutting it kind of close for this one. Well, being new to the board, I'd like to know what, what is it?
Wholesome has this deal set up where they, when they came to the county where in lieu of making like, you know, paying taxes, they donate to this community foundation. So there's this money that gets awarded to community organizations. And from what I, you know, I've been finding out, there's no matching funds required. And then talking to people and kind of looking at where they've awarded grants before, they like projects that are like new and one-time. They don't want to get into something where it's every year because this thing ends after their ten-year deal is up, so...
Is it a general grant or is it a block grant or... Does it have to go to something specific or can you divide it up?
Well, they're gonna want you to list something specific that you want to do, you know, with, with the money.
I think it's more a project thing. Yeah. Community needs something. I've seen them give it a different thing right off the hand, I don't remember if...
We got one for the...
Yeah, we got one for the...
Fire and water. The operation. So, yeah, we, we'd use that.
It can be something different, but I think it's something really... Go ahead, please, you might remember.
Yeah, we got a gas detector. We had, one time we used it for westerns leak detection to come and detect any, any water leaks, cause we suspected some water leaks that weren't visible. And, and this year I'm gonna request from a mid-range leak detector to, you know, identify leaks that are not, that may be under pavement or something like that. You can't, if it doesn't show up.
For the water, you mean?
Yeah, for water. Or either that, a camera that goes through lines and you can inspect the lines with a camera, that kind of thing, so...
We've been in the paper one, one, over a year, then why don't we do it?
For I know for the last two, two years, we've, we've received money from the, the grant.
From this one? From this one or is that different?
No, St. John's County.
I knew we got something, but I don't, I didn't remember what. I don't think it's millions of dollars, but it's...
That's what I was gonna ask, how big is, can you make the project?
There's a lot of money in it, but I'm like, it's beating out everywhere.
Yeah, they've only got...
In the bigger town, going to get one like that. We're getting little bit down there.
I know, work session normally, don't speak.
And if we let you in, you got something on there.
It's, it's not only for, for government. The St. John's County Amateur Radio Club got a grant to put a full-featured repeater system in. Cause we do, you know, public service communications, so we got one through wholesome. Put that in and we just applied for, they approved it. We have to show what we use the money for and like he says, it's no matching, you don't have to pay anything back. So it's not just government, so...
If you get it in face, it's all kinds of entries you can get and request. Everybody will get it, but they get requests every day, I imagine. But it'd be worth the trying to see if we got something that we can request and all you pay is yes or no, you know? But it needs to come, it's worthwhile.
Can we put it towards our park?
Well, I'm sure you could if you, if you come up with a project against...
It would have to be specific. It would have to be, if it was for the park, it would have to be something specific for the park. I mean, you couldn't just put the park...
I assume that you could write a some kind of a deal that, you know, that marked over and don't have this, don't have that and we could do, you know, some money.
You said that.
Upgrades. And fix it up, our bathrooms, you know? Which is, by the time we fix them, they get tore back up and I don't know how many times they've been fixed. Unless you had the money to really do them, I mean, which you don't like to get, build everything in the wall, but you can't, but you can't build one if it ain't there. I see St. John's being, they're having articles there, they're getting their doll tore up, you know? So I don't want to answer to it. But there's a lot of things you could get disclaimed, all of our kids' stuff and things are getting really bad. I'm sure Park will be a project that they would look at for their kids. Anytime you do something for kids and veterans and disabled and, and we're not really handicapped and stuff down there as I'm back to be, you know, mentioned. I'm sure it, they feel a lot of things to say to them, you know?
Do we have enough time to even...
I don't know.
Put our heads together and, and shouldn't the community have a little bit of, I mean, that'd be helpful.
Well, even we don't, it's something that the board should be looking and working, it's gonna come again next year. Even if you wait, if you don't get some time this year, you try, David can probably put something together, if everybody agree on something, but it's something that should be working toward it.
Every year.
Right.
Do they always wait this late to do it? Or do you know? This is really what you need or...
Well, I mean, I, I went by the county and picked up the, the grant application, just so you guys could have them, cause you had any ideas. But I know we've, we've got some, you know, we've gotten grants from them before, so I just wanted to hear you guys, where are we? Get your input on any ideas, you know, the community gives a bit of...
I'm not sure that you can't put in grants at different times for them, but I think they act on, by certain point done, they don't do it all, all year long.
Yeah, they, that's all about the end of the year, the grants awarded and things like that.
Well, I, I think that's what you, the thing is, it's, it's not anything that's gonna, the city's gonna have to put money in towards like some of the other things. And if it benefits the residents, I just, you know, wonder, is it, is it fair to the residents of the city for the four of us to just decide on something, just like I said, well, let's do, let's do the park.
That's what you're elected to do.
Well, we're like...
That's what you are elected to do. You cannot elect a city, you might every, that, resident might every city.
Not every city.
To represent the city. You might get out and fill them out, talk to them, they're not too interactive because they're not very many here every month. So you can do it any way you want to do it. But one of the things I'm gonna make available, the questionnaire we put out a few years ago by a group of people, I forget their name now. And the public responded to it, you know, how little it was and people talk about the park. And the public responded to it, and how little it was and people talk about the park and I can tell you were, they were a good number of people in this town, they didn't know we had a park. But it was a big issue all the time. It was so terrible that they wouldn't even make it tough. Now, what came about our division? What was it?
Score.
Score. Yeah. I got a copy of it, I've had it for years, I kept it, put away, waiting for the last, my time. But regardless of how little people know about this town, they've lived here for years. And how many times they've been to the park, how many times they do this. But you are elected, each and every one of us, to represent these people and their needs. And they have a right to input, they definitely have a right for input. But they should get their input, they shouldn't have to beg for it. You better be known that we're doing something, wanting to do something. Like, actually, I'll call you, you can call him, whatever, no question. They, they probably, you know, I say, like, I said, if somebody wants to make a project or rolls out of it or something, it ain't that. Most people don't give a damn.
Well, that's unfortunate.
Most people don't give a damn.
It is unfortunate, we need to.
But it, it is unfortunate, it's very unfortunate. But whenever you got a park that's been here ever since the same time almost, and then thirty percent of them didn't even know you had one. And sixty percent of them has never used it, some of them might have used it once a year.
It's not real friendly to use right now, I mean, with the old equipment and there's, there's just.
What was it, what was it all down? What do you want down?
Well, that's, that's why I, you know, I like your idea about park equipment, that was my first thought. It's a person more than I need for it.
What would, what would we put down? If you had, if I say, okay, I give that, there's a whole bunch of money, I'm gonna, tell me what we need down there, what do you want?
Well, they have those, uh, those equipment things that encompass more than, you know, like bridges and things like that for, for motor skills and for just enjoyment. Not just, what we've got down there is a slide, a couple of women teeter totters and some swings. Okay, and they're, but they, they have a lot of upgraded, heavy-duty equipment now that are used on playgrounds.
I drive around all city, no worries. I don't think there's anything like that, at least swings, a few teeter totters or whatever you wanna call.
Well, if that's expensive, that's probably why the city.
And you also, uh, when you get too much stuff, I tell you, you got the liability, the insurance and the coverage and it, it gets bad. I, I think our parks are going down there and having family out and saying, it's pretty good. The way we got set up where you can use, oh, you can do the park, you can do everything. But I very rarely see a man, I've never logged in there and I see a, usually a lady and a couple of kids and women and swinging. And I agree, it needs to be upgraded, they all need to be upgraded.
It's a little secluded and I think that that is.
But that was. That's moving with the.
Yeah, it's quiet, it is quite, yeah.
That's our one word problem, it's too secluded. Nobody, there's not a city ready that's been so good. The only ready thing there, what goes in is not in the city limits. That brick house is not in the city limits to go in and just walk. And she don't want it, don't want it.
And maybe some aesthetic, something that, uh, would. When people come through, they will see something that makes the town look nice because right now there's a lot of things that, you know, you just drive, it's like, oh, just, just keep going. It's not as pretty as it could be, I mean, is there anything that can be done than that?
Everybody, whenever you start doing, nobody wants to get people tickets, they don't wanna make people do things. Uh, you pose the ordinance to your fellow ordinance and now we show you who it looks like hell. And you pose it, you know, why can't you clean up if you pose a day to clean them? You know, there's a lot of things for cleaning up, there's a lot. If we right now, if we right now move on every house that's falling down in this town, needs picked up, you would scream bloody murder whenever we start giving people tickets that their houses falling down, they won't clean up, they won't pick it up off the porch, they won't clean up. There would be about thirty people in this town getting tickets to mark. And there would be more hell to pay, mark would be run out of town, young would get rid of him because he's enforcing the ordinance. I know what would happen.
You, you need your people time.
But time what?
Most of our people don't even know what our ordinances are because they're not accessible to the people.
Oh, yeah, they are, oh, yeah, they are. Then, no, they don't, they ain't got nothing to do with the ordinance, letting your house run down, that's pride. Letting your house run down is more no pride than it did anything else. Don't give a damn.
Well, some of them are rental homes, but they're looking pretty bad.
You're right.
So that's the landowners.
And we're fighting ordinances on that, we're fighting ordinance every day, we're passing ordinance and everywhere, young don't see, well, ordinances themselves are there. We got a huge sunland on around here, we're trying to get out. But nobody wants to organize it because if I make the rent to it, their home, their property, sunland owner on it, I can make up a better. And when I'm moving on the hill, homeowners, their house falling down, they got stuff on the porch that's been there for ten years. You can't even see the back door for the porch. You're just gonna scream bloody murder. You want it, but you don't wanna do it. Right now, we got an ordinance to clean this town up. But when we do, we're gonna lose about thirty homes. Then we're gonna, we can't, what are you gonna do? We need another thirty more homes, because they gotta be tore down and like we have a whole. Tell me. Drive around, look at some of the homes, they talk more affection with the town down. Start over there. You see the neighborhood, you know the houses I'm talking about. But that's pride, won't it? And they, that they can't do it, some of them can't, but they didn't have to let them get this far out of here. Maintenance is all the thing, get the house looking good.
You're right, pride is, they have no pride.
They don't have it, you can't do that.
They have no pride themselves.
Right.
They did their technical stuff. I wouldn't want to live in some of these places.
Nobody, nobody wanna live there, we don't wanna live down. But I don't have answers to all that, if I did, uh, all these years, we would be still trying to get some of them done, some of them fixed. But we got our district, we work on them and we're gonna be in court on some of them and then we can't go because we do it. Why do we do that? But right now in the mar, if we enforce all our building ordinance, they, homes have to be torn down because they would not, could not, had to cope and couldn't be picked up when it could. If they ever get empty, they will be condemned. I don't know, you can't find pride in the people, you can't do that. That's all you need, if you gotta get somewhere, get people, get community pride and get wanting to make everything better, and it's hard to do. This community just getting a representation for fighting each other and that's the way it's gonna be ever again.
Well, it doesn't have to be, you know that.
Well, no, it, it used to be that way, it, it's just got that away in ten, twelve years. It just keeps getting worse and worse. Everybody tries to fight the city, to the up city. They, I mean, I don't wanna start no feud with you, but everything you do, you try to find something that we done wrong, not something we done right. You, you spend your whole time trying to find something that I've done wrong. You've never tried to find anything I've done right. I know you've done some of the things I've done for this community. But you don't care about that. It's the thing that you think, that you think that you can get me in trouble is all you worry about.
You make a lot of attacks on me when I'm this.
I make them, so they're true.
Because you have your mindset that's the way you wanna think about me. Not that I want to work, but I get out there and talk to the people, I, I see what they're, you know, what they're saying, they have questions and I do my best to answer them, I'm just.
That's what an organ should do.
Exactly.
That's what an organ should do. Did you call somebody about the drug plant today, did you call nine-one-one?
I did call nine-one-one, I called the county to ask them what was this about and it's just, because I didn't understand what it was. Because this thing just says.
Why didn't you come through the board for it and everything? Why did you, did you notify them that you was an organ?
Yes, it did.
Well, see, that makes it seem like you're representing the city to call somebody that you don't even know what the city does. When you identified yourself as an organ, not as a concerned citizen, you went out of your boundary. You know, you, you, you represent yourself as a city representative to talk about something that the board don't even know about and have sense to touch or work on.
Well, it was, it was posted on the door so the board can know about it.
Yeah, and we're gonna dispatch it tonight and then we're gonna, if we approve it, then we're gonna try to take care of it. See, I, I don't want to say this, but we're telling you. Okay, I do, I ain't got no more to say, except you understand finishing up your work session, do whatever you want, I'm not saying no more because I'm getting out of line, now I got more to do that, I'm gonna shut up, I got no more to say. And y'all won't stop my reaction, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, I got it. Is there anything else that we can use this grant for? I mean, something that. I mean, any ideas?
There's, there's not like a lot of limitations on it, I mean, you could request a grant for anything you want. Uh, but I can just kinda tell by things, what they've awarded grants before, it's like, it's like projects, you know? Here's, here's something we wanna, you know, add or actually replacing equipment that you cannot afford to replace. Uh, but yeah, I know we got some fire equipment out of them and they also gave us money for the coordination building as well. So, I mean, two projects that we got money for and, you know, and every year the deadline is thirty first, I figure, well, if we get, we're going for it is, you know, if you guys have any ideas of things, you know, thinking, you know, you reach over a department, so if there's something that department needs, let's request it.
Maybe we need to what, like if our department needs something specific.
So they're really good if our department, if they need, uh, the heart failure.
Well, that's what, that's where I'm going with this. We need blood pressure pump, swollen up for a small child. An oxygen mask, oxygen mask.
But we have it, we have it.
Not for a child.
Not for a child.
Not for a small child.
Oh, I didn't know about child, no.
No. Do you not, there is not a blood pressure cuff for a small child.
See, that's something that we could, to me, to me, that is priority.
But we need.
That's my opinion.
We need to get with Joe.
Right, and get it.
I mean, if they've got an accident or anything. That's the same thing I told David a couple of weeks ago when the org.
Yeah, when that happened.
I came in next day, I'll find out, or do you see, talk to him about it?
Well, I don't know what's the biggest amount, they gave, that gave some pretty good money to a different fire department for different stuff. And different organizations, but I don't, I've rated it, but now I can't remember everything, you know, more very long.
So, so we need this money for this stuff and this money left over, can we use our discretion where we want the rest of it to go?
No, no.
You have to show we're looking for it.
Right.
So they only send you the amount of money that it's going to cost?
Right. Yeah, and now, just as an example with the, with the. With the money we use to get fire equipment, we got specifically the things that we requested, but then we did have some money left over. And we're like, well, if we spend it on, and then we told them, you know, we got this other fire equipment that we could also use and they're like, as long as it's for fire equipment, that's what it's for, they were cool.
And, and the other thing I wanted to ask, if you submit this, is it just like one thing? Or can you do multiple?
Oh, I could send, I, I can turn ten of them, you know, and they'll pick, they'll decide what they wanna put, it's affordable thing. You know, like get all fit and rude, I get done, you know, but you don't limit it, so.
Oh, see, you're not limited to just one grant. That's what I'm talking about. So if we wanted a grant for, for park equipment, and then they also, they need some fire equipment, we could.
Sounds like you need oxygen mask for kids.
I know the fire department needs a lot of stuff. Another fire department gets grants all the time, don't they, I mean, they, they apply for them.
They don't get a hundred grand for nothing. Very rare. And usually what they need, I'm sorry, I wasn't saying more, but usually what they need costs a lot of money and it's ninety can, a ten percent killer. Ten, ninety can, that's so great, so great. Sounds like we were trying to get a fire truck in here and ninety can, boy, that is good. Three hundred fifty thousand dollar park, four hundred fifty thousand dollar park was ten percent of it. Think that?
Well, in my opinion, I think maybe we need to talk to the fire department and see, you know, and maybe do one especially for them for equipment that, you know, because that's life-saving of what, you know? I think that's something that's. And all the repairs they need to be doing on their trucks and going down and, you know, and they're not actually two hundred and fifty dollar, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar hook in the ladder, so.
But, then again, if you're gonna request this thing, you need to get a catalog, you need to see what it's gonna cost, you gotta figure out if we can do it in-house, putting it up. And so you don't wanna go get something and wind up costing you another six, seven thousand dollars before you get it put in the ground or picked up and then we're out that kind of money. And so, you know, you gotta figure that, that you just don't go out there and set it on the ground, walk away from it. But if it's just manual labor, you know, we can work that in. But it takes a lot of other stuff, concrete and stuff, you know, you gotta try to see how much of that's included in and what you need. I mean, somebody back up here and unload, attract a tray of load of park equipment and boxers. You're gonna bounce a million. But I think we should have been asked for something, I don't care what, I mean, I talked to the board, I don't. I could name you two hundred things we need and one just a bad deal, you know? What we need, we came, thought we, we need a street fix.
Can we get, can we put in a grant for something like that? I mean, will that, will that?
I imagine that would be put on the back burner to park, fire equipment and the people that's looking to give you a grant. I imagine you would have to have some political pull, something where it's probably to get that. I don't know that, I really don't. But if you were sitting on the board and you had somebody here wanting to park for kids and somebody wanted to redo a street, you mean you're gonna look over here at the park?
Yeah, but you use the street.
You don't ride down the street, but you get a lot of publicity for a park.
They can put, they can put equipment in a park, public key related play with it.
Yeah.
Oh, we could build a new park for one road.
It's really, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know, I mean, it don't hurt to try. Look, if you get too ridiculous, you won't get even. I've never, I don't remember, but if you judgment and you try it, yeah, I want a park, we could. Everything would be good.
What are some of the ideas beside the park? You said you had a lot of ideas, but.
Well, I can be straight in the bank that we need, all kind of infrastructure we need, we need everything. We just need some money to operate, jump and pay off some of these bills where we can cut our water rates in half and then losing another factory that took about six, seven, eight hundred dollars a month out of our water bill. You know? There's a lot of things we need, but these people ain't gonna help you all down.
She's glad you get this house for money.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
He just wants the money. So why did say remind me?
They had room. Okay, from what I hear, I. They want this. There is a possibility that there is somebody looking at it myself. But they already want tax breaks, but we can't give them tax breaks. We can't, are they living a tactic we're getting now, how can we give a tax? Sabreliner was giving property, that was the first part. These people that come buy this property, if they buy it, it's gonna get it at a discount price. They don't need a tax break, but we can't give a tax break to them. We can't survive on the taxes we're drawing out. No matter what they say, we can't give a tax break, and we take Sabreliner questions. They helped this town a lot, I mean, they were attacked in the water, but you know how many people live in this town and work at Sabreliner?
Two, no, I didn't.
One. But the problem is, when I big enough to have a grocery store or clothes, clothing thing, that they spend the money on. All we get off of them is taxes. Uh, the car plate gets a few. Uh, the car plate gets a few bucks coming, we're coming and going to help them out. But basically you don't get anything. You're like, there you go. You know, they got all kinds of people there. Everybody lives there. They can give a tax break. Because the most that money is going back into their community when they get to pay that no price. But whenever these people with Sabre Island get paid to go to Fayetteville, say, you know, be sure to tell them all, one check goes here and down. Now, he don't work on it.
It's a lot of big chunk too, by the, the water.
Water, sure.
Thousand dollars or fifty five thousand gallons difference from one month to the next.
Water, sure. That's not an issue. I mean, well, appreciated and it was good tax. And we dropped some policy tax on it for a long time from somebody. I hope we don't wind up with it. But it wasn't that good. There is negotiation going on with people on, on, I'm not gonna play anything because I don't know. Well, I don't know nothing. Tell you the truth very much.
This chemical aerospace, are we going to discuss something about that tonight?
Well, that's right. They, they contacted me, which is why I put them on the agenda. And um, they, they're wanting, well.
To inspect it.
Right. The, they're, here, here's the way they worded it. Would need city's help with added expense to operate facility an hour away. They're up in, like, Kirkwood, um, and they have a plant up there. I think they have another one in St. Louis. So um, in order for them to operate down here, they're wanting some type of heat. He wouldn't be specific on what he wanted. You know, I tried to pin him down, but he won't let me pin him down. Uh, but I'm sure it's a tax break, um, or some kind of, you know, us giving them money and, you know. And it's up to you, you know, I, I have no idea, you know.
No, it matters. We can't do it.
We don't have any information.
Well, yeah, and I just put on to see if you guys even are open to doing any kind of negotiations with them, so I can even try or, you know.
How can we negotiate with them if we have nothing to negotiate with?
Right, yeah.
Anyway.
That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, I'm, we're informing you that if they want something. And I gotta talk to them now. We can't, I put it off and put it off. So I talked to the board. But they have nothing to negotiate with. We're going to, I mean, I'll be just as nice as I can be, but I don't wanna say what I'm gonna say till I get set. But I'll try to be nice and get them down here if we can and do everything we can to work with them. But if they want a tax break, we don't have it. If, we got a law. Everything up there we needed, but from that, we can't, sure can't give up taxes. The first, the property tax, the real estate tax. We got no gift. But uh, we, it's not right there upon the board that what's going on and everything, we don't know everything yet and won't know where. David, I, he'll, he'll, I'll get to talk. He'll come next week. I won't be around. We can't, I will. But he knows I don't told him that we got nothing yet. We don't, but maybe we can say something and make them want to come. But I think that they probably getting the help from the problem. And they're probably, I don't know this company. I haven't investigated them yet. I don't know much about them, but uh, I'm sure that we can get something on them, but uh, they're running away from something about it, a contract. Most of them leave the city, like I guess, you know, this is, they ain't there on. Low oasis. They could work for us around here, you know, if that's what they want. But it would be right to, I informed the board of what we know, but we don't really know anybody. We get know their rest of them. And this has been going on. We can add to it.
I gotta call on November fourth and then and then the fifth is when the next guy calls. And they're both, they're both telling us, what can the city do?
Likely somebody done bought it from Sabre Island. Some salvage company done bought, like, claimed it on their home. Some salvage company attacking their equipment out of it.
What is that? It's for like recovery services and that where they, they will melt.
And then these people are gonna buy it from them. It's like this baby. Trying to do it. And there's some kind of aerospace and stuff, but that don't, they don't even, they don't even want to be over there, don't be on. They build buildings. I don't care if it's a tragedy or anything.
That wouldn't be good.
And it holds a lot of water.
Yeah.
If you got more break, you better get it. You got six minutes.
Not me.
I don't believe that.
I do. Did you say it all, Sam?
Upside down.
Upside down?
You're late to life, I think, as you get older when you're, you know, you're younger.
A little later.
Hello, my dear, I'm not still up. What are you going about, calling him, Ruth?
Uh, no, not now. I pretty love that your life, I bet you.
John Boy, any point. Well, I've been gone too long now.
I don't know, Saturday, Monday. It was a fifty day haul. I'm not gonna shoot you either. We gotta go like that. There's a grandma in the burger. And Mr. Killers, Gaddy and Taco.
Oh, I like it, Ben, I like it.
I don't mean.
The wife and particularly kids, but I like everything that I would give him or they kept him with their stuff. I like chili, taco, anything. It badly, not much fifty fifty. I don't mind putting a little brown bean with it. You could have a great day, you know. You there, Hunt? Frank?
No, sir. I've got a seventy pound bowl, but you know, it's gathering dust up in St. Louis, you know.
I can't use a, a regular bowl anymore. I keep pulling back to the shoulder up. I got a problem. I got one, but not. To me, that cheap, I mean, legal, but like using the gun.
Why don't you tell the lie? I think I'm gonna get it.
Well, if you know, you have to. See, I, I know it's permanent, this building are, I mean, not that you can only hit it three year, for three year, you have to do it. But I got it, it's a prince. But I think, I got a good bowl, but I can't go back.